Okay, I'd like to bring this meeting to order for the Town of Brunswick Planning Board for October 2nd, 2025. If everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, this evening, our agenda is as follows. This was posted on the town website and the town board. Number one, Debley special use permit. Applicant seeks a special use permit for an installation of a ground-mounted, small-scale solar collector system on property located at 34 Cranston Road. There's a public hearing to commence at 7:00 PM. John Debley is the applicant. Number two, O'Neill special use permit. Applicant seeks a special use permit for the installation of a ground-mounted, small-scale solar collector system on property located at 229 White Church Road. Edwin O'Neill is the applicant. And number three, Paramount Building Group, major subdivision. Applicant proposes a major subdivision on approximately 33-acre parcel of land, as well as construction of a new road with a cul-de-sac and a water line extension on property located at Northeast Corner. With Spring Avenue Extension and Crick Road, Paramount Building Group of New York is the applicant. Okay, with that being said, our first item on our agenda is the public hearing, and this is for the Debley special use permit. And I will read the procedure for our public hearing. Purpose of a public hearing is to hear concerns, comments, and views from the general public regarding a particular proposal or application. All public hearings are electronically recorded and a written record of the proceedings is generated. In most cases, this written record is included with the minutes of the Planning Board's regular meeting, which is usually conducted immediately after the public hearing. The applicant will be required to respond to all concerns and comments made at the public hearing, and subsequently, the Planning Board will consider all concerns and comments when evaluating the application to ensure that the applicant has addressed all the issues in question. Public hearing will be conducted as follows. The notice of public hearing will be read by the Planning Board attorney. Next, the applicant will give a brief presentation on the proposal and will provide any updates on the application. Upon completion of the applicant's remarks, the chairman of the Planning Board will recognize persons from the public, and these individuals would be allowed to speak, offer their concerns, comments, and views. Since the proceedings of the public hearing are electronically recorded, it is requested that all speakers step forward and use the microphone at the podium, and all speakers will give their name and address for the record. This time, I will have the notice of public hearing read by the Planning Board attorney, Andy Gilchrist.
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board of the Town of Brunswick at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 2, 2025, at the Brunswick Town Hall, 336 Town Office Road, Brunswick, New York, 12180, to review the application submitted by John Debley for a special use permit in connection with the installation of a ground-mounted, small-scale solar collector system on property located at 34 Cranston Road. Copies of the application are available at the Brunswick Town Hall and are available for public inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing. This was published in the Troy Record, posted on the town signboard and the town website, mailed to owners of properties located within 300 feet of the project site.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I will officially open the public hearing and ask that the applicant come up and give us a brief presentation for the benefit of the public on the project. You're not John?
No. I'm his wife, Patricia Debley, 34 Cranston Road, in Trenton.
Okay, and just give a brief...
Looking to do a ground-mounted solar system, 20 by 30, about 10 kilowatts of power and all electricity generated to be used for the home.
Okay. Any particulars about this? Were you, you were, you had to get a variance from the zoning board?
Zone variance, yes.
On two setbacks, I believe?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, then, at this time, I will open up the floor for the public to make any comments, have any opinions or anything like that. Does anybody wish to come up? Ma'am?
Last time I was here, my name is Karen Pescoochi, and I live on Banbury Road. We were told that it would be 24 10 by 12 panels. Now, I know what it's saying here, where it says it's an installation of a ground-mounted, small-scale solar collector system, but I don't really think that that is accurate. If it's going to be 24 huge panels put on a sidewalk, we will all be able to see them in the neighborhood.
Okay.
I did, and I don't think you could really see it from, I know that, you know, and I'm not an architect, but I do see that most of the time, you can't really tell what's going on just from some visual map without pictures. So I do have, can I bring this up?
Sure.
I do have pictures that, of what is actually happening. Okay, this is the area here that planned 24 panels are going to go. Over here, there is put a shed and screen area, so you'll never actually see them. Only us that are coming out of Petticoat or Banbury Road will be able to see them. I have a two-story house, and I'm beginning to see where they're going to be going, okay? With the leaves falling off the tree, it's going to be really upsetting. I am more concerned about the value of the house, the house, devaluing the houses. It just doesn't seem that, in our neighborhood, that we should have to deal with 24 panels. They're not really that cost-effective. I don't understand why there has to be 24. There's also that, the issue with the glare coming off of them, so...
Can I pass that around?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I made that especially for you guys.
Okay.
So basically, I'm worried about glare, because you're going to have them facing that particular, he's going to put them to the south, we're going to, you know, neighbors are going to get glare from them. Basically, if they're not, when he decides that they're not working anymore, if they're not actually disposed of properly, there's, it can put chemicals into the ground that's just going to affect the water, the soil, the animals. And it's very, it's very, I have lived there now for 52 years next month, and I just feel that, I thought this was my forever home, but with this kind of atmosphere that they're creating by doing this, I feel as if my house now, even when I do put it up for sale, will just be devalued. I mean, only 50% of the people believe in solar panels, and half of that amount is not going to want to live in a neighborhood that your side yard, where the deer usually, you know, congregate, are going to be wanting to buy my house if they have to look at that. Also, it's very curious to me, like I said, it'll be 52 years next month. I worked and left for work every morning at quarter to seven, and there's always a family of deer under the apple tree. It's very curious that there hasn't been a deer under the apple tree since the last meeting at the end of August. I don't know why, they've been there for years. But I just, I just feel as if there's a, you know, there's just so much, even with our town dump, the high cost of disposing of them properly, when the panels are not working again, it's $20 to $30 a panel. But you could bring them to the town dump for $1 to $3. And here we have, where do you think they're going to go? It's going to be our town dump. It's not going to affect me today, but I have grandkids and kids living in Brunswick, and, you know, it's for them that I'm standing here, that it's, you know, things just aren't right. I don't know if there's anything else I can say, other than, this is what I'm thinking it might be. Where would you put it? Not my town, but if they tend to fall, and there's 24 of them, I'd be pretty sure they'll be similar to that.
What size panels did you say they were?
I was told, well, I guess she said they were 20 by 30, and there's 24, and they're 10 to 12 feet tall. That's what was told to me at the last meeting.
There, when you started, you said there were 24 panels, 10 by...
10 or 12 feet tall.
Okay.
In a side yard at the end of Petticoat, in the town of Brunswick. And actually, with the sides of their house, they can put them on the roof, put them in the front if they faces west, they're going to get a lot of sun. They could put them on the back roof if it faces east, they get the morning sun. So for all this disruption, it just doesn't seem logical to me that they should be able to do that.
Now, the application says that it's a 30-foot by 20-foot footprint. To me, and I...
We were told 24 panels, and they're going to be that high? I'm sure they...
I, 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 I think there may be some confusing information here, but we can, we'll clarify that at the meeting.
Okay.
One quick question. You stated your address, you're on Banbury?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, anything else you'd like to make? Any more comments?
No, I guess not.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to come up and make any comments? Okay.
Good evening. My name's Doug McLaren. I'm a solar engineer, and I'm responsible for the Debley system design. So I wanted to clarify a couple of those questions.
Could I, hold on a second?
Sure.
Andy, he's representing the applicant at this point.
Yeah, this is, this is for public comment, and then, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant will respond to public comments.
Okay. So I shouldn't respond?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay.
My name is Paul Clayton. I'm an immediate neighbor of the Debleys at 40 Cranston. I just wanted to let your body know that I have absolutely no problems with the proposal. The Debleys say that it'll be behind the property, not up by the road, it'll be facing south, it won't be facing the side road. You just see the side of it, you won't see glare from the panels, as I understand the proposal.
Okay.
And they probably have the best-looking house in the neighborhood, and everything they do, including putting it in a pool this summer, has been done professionally, classed. And I would just want you to know that, as immediate neighbor, I have no concerns whatsoever.
Now, at 40 Cranston Road, where would you be in relation to the Debley house?
Just south, on the same side of the road.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to make any comments? Did we receive any written responses? Okay, so there's no written responses that would be entered into their record. At this time, I would like to close the public hearing if there's no other people wish to come up and say anything. Okay, last chance. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now officially closed. The regular meeting will now start, and part of our regular meeting procedure is to review the minutes of the past meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to take a look at those? Is there any questions, additions, amendments? Okay, hearing done, I will make a motion to accept the minutes as they were submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to our agenda. First on our agenda is the Debley special use permit, and now you can come up. We have, we have completed the, the public hearing. There was one comment, well, there was two comments made, one concerning some of the size and location and so forth and so on, so I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Doug McLaren, M-C-L-A-R-E-N. I'm a solar engineer, among other things, and I designed the Debley system and worked for East-West Electric, a state, New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, the NYSERTA. He's a rare certified installer. So the footprint of 20-foot by 30-foot is correct. Each panel, of which there will be 24, is about 83 inches long by 39 and a quarter wide. As far as value, beauty and value, of course, is not in the eye of the beholder many times, but the Department of Energy has had a study that shows the increase in value due to homes due to solar, as well as, more recently, Zillow has an article out there about how homes sold with solar sell for more. And as far as glare goes, any flat surface has the potential for glare. If you're in the wrong place, if you don't want to see the glare, there's always a possibility there. I, we're the first to acknowledge that, but because the sun moves, it's not a constant thing. It's a kind of thing where it might come to a spot, and then it's going to move. Also, I would like to say that glare can be no worse off this ground-mounted solar, which is lower to the ground, than the glare off a roof-mounted system. And I think we very seldom notice that to be a real issue, partially because it is a passing thing. There was a comment about the chemicals, and my comment about that is, there are certain chemicals in any manufactured product, of course, but my opinion is, not opinion, but also, some of the research shows that the chemicals that any recycled panels will release are certainly not worse than the chemicals released by the burning of fossil fuels that would be needed to be utilized in lieu of the generation of solar through the renewable solar energy. So it's not a perfect solution, but many people have done the work, have shown that it is a better solution than, for example, some of the chemicals that go into the air due to the burning of fossil fuels. There's a comment about deer. I had to comment on this, because I also have a ground-mounted solar system, and the deer love it underneath there. They just like to bed down in there, especially during the wintertime, because there's no snow underneath there. So the deer don't have a problem with solar panels, in my experience. As far as the disposal of the panels, I think this is something that's going to have to be addressed in the future as more panels are put up. I think that the business of recycling them will progress, as it has with other recyclable materials. We're very fortunate, we have never had a panel go bad, so we've never had to dispose of one. And again, I'd like to say that I think the alternative, in many cases, can be worse than the solar panels, which are relatively inert. And now roof, roof mount. There's a comment about how maybe the panels should be put on the Debley's roof. I would not allow that. I am not a proponent of roof mounts. I don't think it's good engineering-wise, because this is a long-term project. The panels are warranted for 25 years. They often go longer than that. Some panels were already on the hockey arena that went over 40 years, and that was years ago. I don't know if they're still there. But putting panels on a roof when a roof could leak, as asphalt roofs could leak, I think is a major mistake. It has done the solar industry, in my opinion, bad publicity, because people need to take the panels off, which is hugely expensive, not to mention putting them back on and fixing the roof. And Town of Brunswick and this country, when are we going to have a roof leak? January, February, when you get the thaws and the refreezings. If that roof leaks, then having someone go up to try to fix that is a nightmare, and the insurance company is going to get involved, because drip, drip, drip. And is it the roofing person's fault or the solar person's fault? Neither will go up there typically, because it's icy, and it's cold, and it's really hard to fix these things. So the drips continue, and it's a nightmare. So I am a believer of small-scale residential ground-mounted solar, because let it leak through the panels, it drips onto the ground, just like the rain, no downside of it. I believe there's some exceptions of that. Ballasted systems on flat roofs typically, where there's no penetration, standing seam roofs, where there's no penetration also. However, it is not a fit for the Debley system. And I think that answers all the comments that I had notes for, but if there's any questions from the group, I'm happy to try to address them.
Now, just as a clarification, this is a stationary system?
Yes.
There's no rotation with the sun or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just for the benefit of the public. Does anyone have any questions?
Is it all one square, one plane, or is it...
Yep, continuous 20 by 30 with individual panels within that, but it's one single plane, so there are no sub-arrays, one array. Six posts in the ground, they're like big tapcons, they screw them into the ground.
Six panels across the ground, four...
Four across the bottom in a landscape orientation, and six deep, six up.
With a landscape orientation.
So the panels will be like this, as opposed to that.
So this photograph is not correct as far as the way you're going to...
Man?
Sure? That's not an example of what you're going to put there? Not a long thing?
The similarities, it's a, a ground mount with poles holding it. This here is much longer, and this is only two panels deep, and they are in the portrait orientation.
Yeah.
So there's some significant differences.
Okay. Wayne, do you have any?
I'm all set.
You're all set?
Dave, you have any other questions?
All right, thank you. Well, under normal circumstances, when there's multiple issues and multiple speakers, we request that the applicant respond to each one of these in writing. However, you did an excellent job on going through each one of those at this meeting. I don't know whether a written response at this point would be necessary. I'm going to refer to the, to Andy on that, but we could waiver that...
That's simply your practice, and that's within your discretion.
All right. Does anybody have any questions at this point, want further information? Is there any reason why we can't move forward with this? And was everybody satisfied with the responses to the public comments? Let's ask, let me ask that question first. Was everybody satisfied?
I think the response by the applicant addressed the comments, clarified the public hearing comments, questions that were...
Okay.
...in conflict, but, and the majority of the comments were addressed. I'm not sure if the applicant has any other considerations or the visual perspective, aside from glare, if there's...
Is there any plans to put additional screening, landscaping, or anything like that around this?
No.
Okay. Is there any natural vegetation that's there now?
Yes.
And would that be, would that satisfy some type of visual impact from the road?
So the bottom of the array, if we look at the array, the bottom of the array is probably going to be about this high.
Okay.
And I would say the vegetation's on the order of six to eight foot tall. We will cut some of that back so that it's not screening the sun on the edges, so it'll be a little further away, so we're not going to cut it down, but we'll cut it back away a little bit. That said, six to eight feet will not completely screen the top of the array. So I would guess that on, you know, roughly half of the array would be screened completely by vegetation, but I discourage the planting of trees to try to screen this, because trees grow up, and now we're screening the sunlight. Plus, a commitment to plant trees, there's an expense there that changes the economics, as well as a commitment to keep them there. What if the trees die? Is it necessary to replant them? So I would say with the current vegetation, about half of the array will be screened, but it depends largely upon where you are on Cranston. but it depends largely upon where you are on Cranston Road. So it's a very steep hill coming from the north to the south. So if you come down that hill from the top, if you're at the right spot and can see it, you'll see more. If you're at the very bottom of the road, you'll see less.
And it's my understanding that the orientation of the panels, that plane will be toward the house about which this is benefiting from.
Correct. The plane will be pointing essentially towards the Deberly's house. A little bit west of south, but yes, essentially towards the house.
So if you're coming out of Petticoat Lane, you would see just the profile of it?
Correct.
Okay.
And partially that is screened.
Yes.
Thank you.
How high is the highest point on this?
Eleven and a half foot tall.
Okay.
And it's above ground, above ground level.
Okay. So that's about to the exit sign there, probably. Any further questions? All right. Is everybody prepared to move forward on this? Okay, if so, then I would ask for a secret determination on this.
Link on a negative declaration.
There's a negative declaration, I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Negative declaration? All right.
Hi.
Moving on to the approval of the special use permit. Is there any conditions that should be placed on this? Wayne? Okay. Andy?
I don't see any.
Then I will make, or I will ask for a motion to approve the special use permit?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Uh, second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're all set? It's been approved. Okay, moving on to the second item on our agenda is the O'Neill special use permit. Okay, Mr. O'Neill, we, in our last meeting, there was some engineering discussions and I think Wayne wanted an opportunity to review the construction and take into effect wind factors and things like that. Are you prepared to... Okay.
I was a little concerned. I mean, we're used to seeing steel brining on concrete buildings. We propose it to something different, so I wanted to make sure that it was a practical application and something that could be built and that withstand forces of nature, we'll say.
Right.
The smell. So I had one of my engineers run some numbers on the load, applied loads to the solar panels, the wind load, the snow load. We looked at the soil anchors that you're using, the number of soil anchors that you're using.
Yep.
And we have confirmed that we'll withstand the loading, bed load, and wind load, snow load. So I'm okay with that.
Right.
A little concerned about putting wood directly up the ground. I think we should use some types of free grating material underneath that, crushed stone or something, so that it's not sitting directly up the ground. So is that even a pressure treated lumber?
If I put it up on, say, some concrete papers, two inches, three inches, six inches?
I think that's okay. We've got to make sure that that whole area, you know, soil anchors, that it's staying in the, now soil anchors are doing their job, holding that, bringing down.
Okay. I can make those modifications.
Still a bit of a...
I know. That's why I'm here. Okay. Any other concerns?
Structurally, they're all...
The photographs that was provided, I'm not a volunteer, so, excuse me, but would another cross brace across the front of those, all them legs, keep that from twisting? Or is...
He's got soil, he's got two soil anchors on these, those legs.
Okay. Extent from that cross member?
Yes.
Thank you.
You didn't have to go before the zoning board for any type of variances? No. Setbacks or anything like that? There's ample setback. Okay. Procedurally, we have to schedule a public hearing for this. Yes. Which I assume you're aware of. And we can do that. We cannot do it at our next meeting, but we can do it at the first meeting in November. And that would be on November 6th. We do have some issues as far as preparing the public notice and distribution of the public notice to residents and so forth and so on. That's why we need a little bit more time than two weeks. Okay. So we can schedule you for the public hearing on the 6th of November and you'll be first on the agenda. It'll be a seven o'clock public hearing and followed by our regular agenda. Like I said, you'd be the first on the agenda. So you can do that. Is there any other questions from the board? We're a little light on board members tonight, so if there's none, do you have any questions for us? Yeah, I'll see you on November 6th. Okay. Thank you very much. Are you ready, Matt?
Sure.
All right. Next on our agenda is the Paramount Building Group. Been a while since we've seen you.
I know, I know. I was there the whole summer.
Good, good. Has it been that long?
Yeah.
The whole summer? Okay. All right. We've received a bunch of stuff. Now, just as a, we have received two things, well, in addition to your full...
Yep.
...second, we did receive from Heart Engineering. This revised, this, this is comments from Azar. And the second one has to do with the evac excavation rooting feasibility assessment.
Yes.
So I assume you probably want to review those?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That would be great. To begin everybody getting that off Heart Engineering here.
All right. I'll turn the floor over to you.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing significant on the site design changes. We did submit, review Wayne's office's comments and submitted a response letter back to that as well as an updated plan set and updated SWIP. Also, we did receive that secret review comment memo from Wayne's office in July, which we provided a response to that as well as a traffic analysis done by Creighton Manning Engineering, because they specialize in that type of thing we hear. So, so a brief rundown, I know everyone's currently under review by Wayne's office, so we're eager to hear thoughts and comments on that. But SWIP and the plan set, I think we basically addressed a large portion of the comments there. Now regarding the secret review memo, I don't know if you wanted to go through that?
I would like to go through that.
Sure, sure. Do you want to go basically point by point, Mr.?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Absolutely. So we did take, and just for easy reference, we have the comments from Wayne's letter included in our response letter.
Okay.
So the first comment, so from Wayne's memo, "I've served my initial review of the secret FTAF part one for the subject project. So that all the environmental impacts can be analyzed, please provide the following additional information to complete my review." One is cut fill calculations. So you see our response there, we've got this in front of you, so cut the export is about 425,000 yards and the fill placed on site is about 14,000 jobs based on using auto catch and all three things. The next comment here was...
I have a quick question.
Yes.
The fill placed on site, is that replacement, like topsoil or something like that, or what is that? Or is that just, is that just moving it around?
That's just moving on site.
Okay.
Yep. To establish same grades for the driveways for these, specifically these units here. The bulk of the fill is carrying this portion of the site, just for reference.
Taken to subgrade of roadway?
Uh, no, the finished grade to finished grade. So, we could take in...
New, new, but not...
Okay. We can estimate the road area and do something based on that, basically. So I think we've got the station on the road, we could do it through quick, that, that next question.
Could be a little bit more, you're cutting, you're not cutting on the subject, but you got to replace it sometimes.
Uh, yes, yeah. Yep, you're right, you're right, yes. So we do have, like, all the swales are included in that grading and bringing everything to finished grade, the lawns and whatnot. So that's all included, but the road sub base, if you want us to get around that, we can absolutely, yeah. Yes.
And not foundations either?
Foundations.
Well, just asking.
Sure.
Foundation.
Yeah, there's probably an average, we could do it like with other accessory, yeah.
Sure.
What's the date of your letter that you're working on?
September 26th, 2025. It's the shorter one.
Yeah, you got two letters that are...
Yes, the one is for the plan set and the SWIP comments, and this one is specifically for the secret review.
Okay.
September 26th there and these are done. You got it? Okay.
Yeah, lots of paper.
Yeah, it was a big submission. We did a lot of homework, since we've seen you last, so...
You're not bringing in the using existing fill, protect that to 1,000 miles?
Yeah, yeah. They definitely get cut in place without seconds here, though, for sure.
You didn't do any kind of boring or anything?
Um, no, when we were doing the set testing and the testing for the infiltration basin, they went about as deep as they could go with the excavator. I'd have to ask the operator about how far it was by the, I want to say it was, it was at least 120 feet. And materials seem to be pretty, pretty much the same.
What's the maximum height of the, of a cut?
The maximum cut here?
Yeah.
I think there's a, there's a, I'd have to look at the existing grade map, just to compare, I think it's sheet C120. I believe it's in this area, somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 mile or 40 feet. There's a crown here.
Yeah.
And then the six are rolling back off.
Yeah.
So, we'll get, we'll get the roadhouse too, which is, and the foundation house. It's also long to good.
Okay.
Going on dive in two?
Two, yeah, okay.
A schedule of how long the excess material removal will take, including any phasing of the earthwork portion of the project. So our response to that is, per NYSDEC requirements, the site cannot fall under jurisdiction of the mine plan reclamation law. The excess material is to be removed from the site within two years of excavation. As such, it is proposed that the schedule for bulk material export from the site will be two years or less. Excavation will be phased for the stormwater pollution prevention plan, phasing, or similarly, to ensure that the soil disturbance for the site remains under that five acre threshold. That's a waiver, is it paying for, for the soil?
And are getting away with it?
We haven't discussed it at this time. It might be something that they pursue, but at this time...
Have you thought about how you're going to phase this?
Yes.
Starts in five acres?
Yep, yep. So we do have, I don't have the phasing plan with me, but we did put a phasing plan in this, but showing probably coming into the initial portion of the site, including the stormwater basin, getting things cut to get somewhere for the stormwater to go, getting grade established here, stabilized, and moving into the site. So phasing the roadway and the box out, basically, putting the grade work into the site. Stabilizing, I guess, as grade established, stabilized, so you're under that five acre threshold, continue it, work into the site.
Where do you think your truck route out of the site? Is it going to be at the road or in the center of the site?
Um, where the exit would be? Probably, probably about here, there's good site distance where the proposed entrance is. So I think that that would be, that would be the, where the distance from the intersection with Big and Spring there, right? So if there was a suggestion of the town, that would certainly be...
There's no consideration of doing an exit onto Spring Avenue direct, right?
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
Nope.
So Crick Road is going to be impacted by this traffic?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you going to do like updates like every six months, how your progress is? Some idea of, you're not falling behind or?
Oh, it's supposed to be, the rest of the board.
Just, I'm sure there's going to be somebody watching over what you're doing, but it'd be good to, if you're, if you're not keeping up, we should know.
I mean, that's one of the things with the DEC, sort of the exceptions of mine life reclamation laws, is they put a two-year backstop on it, but I think as you're making progress towards that, if they don't see progress, I think it will quickly start to become an issue with that, that...
Well, it'll become an issue with us too, but, I mean...
It appears like the volume and the calculations that are in the traffic study and present here, you're right up against it. You've got to be working every day, Monday through Friday. There's 34 trips.
Three inches of rain.
Yeah. So the, the calculation was figured based on, right, the two-year, two-year thresholds.
You're at 500 days with that, that's, that's, every working day, you're hauling material.
Yeah, and looking at that, if you're looking at the report and you see the traffic impacts, basically, again, I know, I know you haven't had a chance to review yet, Wayne, but the...
Bradley.
Oh, you, okay. The brief, the brief synopsis of it, the roads are all rated for at least 1,000 dips per day, the volume, and at the proposed excavation rate, there won't be any trucks during that peak hour and which, the one road, I think, was at 500, it was at 1,000. So it's, really, it's not, it's not a statistical impact really on, on the capacity of those roads. And as far as to when the excavation's underway, this is something that requires a SWIP permit. So Mr. Bradley is the MS4 coordinator for the town. He's going to be out doing some sort of inspectors as well, so if there's something from a SWIP standpoint, I certainly imagine we're comparing it from him as well.
You're going to be taking out 34 loads a day?
Yeah, that's, that's like basically running an average. So it was about 34 loads per day. So...
That's what the assumption that county will approve, the overload rate?
On Creeper?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So... Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, anyone who hauls on those roads would have to have a permit for over, to be overweight. So, I think, I lost track of how many counted when we were out of the site there a few months ago with DEC. But there are quite a few tracks that were running down Creek Road already. So this would just be a couple more to that, to that current volume.
34 is more than a couple.
Yeah, 34 over the course of the day.
What's it with, there's a, they're talking about a 50-vehicle threshold?
Yes, so...
You can't go beyond that, or what?
Um, so there's, there's a general rule of, please bear with me, because I am not a developer, actually, I can't do reference to that. So, new vehicle trips generated by the excavation process is less than the threshold. I believe that is 50 vehicles an hour, whereas this would be eight vehicles an hour. So 50 vehicles an hour, I think, is the trigger to, to an intersection analysis. And so, Creighton Manning's review of the project, the significantly less than that threshold number of trucks.
They specify that sharp roads should not be used, for obvious reasons.
Agreed.
And then, what about that turn onto 355? That's almost like...
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, is that going to impact, it's, it's got to impact the traffic in both lanes, then.
Um, I wouldn't hope that being turned onto a state level would be able to accommodate the truck, the truck turn.
Wayne, you want to?
I think it's worth looking at, have somebody look at that, examine...
Because it isn't a right, it isn't a right-hand, you know, just a 90-degree turn.
It's a Q angle.
Yeah.
Be able to slide, turn right on...
Yeah, there's a, there's a thing there, where you hit 355, yeah.
It's actually a double, it comes to the point, and then there's a double lane.
Like a right angle?
A two-way Dawson. It's very complicated.
It's still, it's still, we're still on the angle now.
Yes.
It's, it's right.
It's not ideal. Could be worse.
So when they turn onto 355, then what, they're going over to 66, and they're going to unload at that, at the Palenti area?
Um, so the, the actual destination, it hasn't been determined yet, but, so, that would depend on project approval, is selecting the destination for the site, for the accessible material from the site. So, basically, what we do at this time is analyze all potential routes from the site and see what the potential impact would be on those roads. So really, the most logical route is to get as quickly as possible to state routes, where they want to get to 355, or to get up through two. So that's, that's the way they analyze the access.
Okay.
And the viability of the capacity of those roads, of which they all have far more capacity than is being proposed to be had.
What, what is the basic type of this material that, and what would it be used for?
Um, there, we, we encounter a general mix of material on the site. So we do have, we do have soil logs noted in the plan set. So we experienced there was anywhere from, like, a loamy material, a silty loamy material, to some spots were sandy, some spots were, like, a silty gravel, cobbles. So, there's a pretty good spread of material on the site.
Okay.
So that's kind of leads into number three here, identification where removed materials to deposit it. So, certain disposing, for any purpose, usually lawful, right? So that's, that's real our response there.
What's, what's an unlawful, what's an unlawful use of material?
I don't want to swim.
Yeah, yeah.
Throw it at somebody, or I don't know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Without a permit, please.
Okay.
And then the next items four through seven are, are addressed really in that excavation routing feasibility assessment by Creighton Manning. So number four was a calculation of the number of truck trips, truck trips required during removal of excavated material. Number five is a map describing what routes to transport the tape, that's also in the study. Number six is a description of what equipment will be used to excavate the material, maybe assortment there, anything from a tractor, the, an on-site haul truck, bulldozer, things of that nature. And providing noise data for the noise produced by the proposed equipment, that's also included in, in the analysis there. So the number of trips are included on page three of the analysis.
Now, you have some residential houses right across the street on Crick Road, and then some, was it to the north on Crick Road?
Yeah. I think there are two, I think there are two houses.
That are right across down here. And I think there's a driveway to go to one further back, I think.
Yeah, only set, set back because they're very far. And I think that's the one right here, they have a retaining wall right here.
Right. Okay. So we have the Creighton Manning report to back this up. Any, any questions on, on the response? Wayne?
Um, my opinion is that you're not going to be able to haul too many material out in there six days a week between each. That's not quite... Maybe a little bit more realistic, I would be able to probably do that, because you're going to have, you've got a weird time, and you're going to get a lot out of there all day. You could empower the field conditions, you may kind of slow it down. Holidays, you have...
It's, I mean, it seems to me that this could be, this could be extended to, you know, possibly three years or more.
Yeah, this, this developer plan on starting to build homes without all the material out there?
Um, we can respond, but I think the bulk of the grading is going to be completed. Would you start, let me zoom in on how good this, would that the road be dedicated, people building permit? Or, so...
If the road is dedicated, you can...
Yeah, so that would have to be, obviously, they want the road, they're not going to want to build a house and not be able to sell it. So perhaps that will mount up, but I would, I would think, and I'll ask, I'll ask that, and I'll get that answer back to you. But...
I don't think the site kind of works for that, given what it's going now.
Yeah.
If you meant roads going in all different directions, and maybe if you're going to have that, that good development and post-weather.
So just to review, you're implying that they, at least the, the road should be cut in there before you even consider buying, building a house, the whole road?
Well, typically, you would build the home, at least up to a certain point.
Yeah. So what is, what is that point? Course, you know, coding on it, or what?
What, phasing?
Yeah. I mean, I know, I...
It could take a lot in two years to clear all that, some made of material out of it. Is it going to wait two years before it starts building houses, if this is the question? Good.
Yeah, I think, in the ideal case, right, is to get the excavation completed and get the road in, and then start...
So it could be two years or more before it gets to the excavation?
Yeah, once they're being the two years, right, that has a better threshold than the site. So certainly...
Well, this, this excavation has to have some type of monetary value to it. I mean, you know, you're not going to give this stuff away, right? So financially, the developer could make money on the property, technically.
If it's material that someone wants, there's a market for it. It's not nice.
Is, I mean, do you, do you have, do you have a person, a party in mind? I mean, has, has there been negotiations on, on taking that out, that somebody's going to do it?
I have the...
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure, you know, there's certainly, certainly construction options in the area, pretty close to the site that can move.
I mean, when, when, when does, when does the clock start, for two years?
When excavation begins.
Oh, when the ex, when it starts, okay.
If they're building houses, D E C is going to say ahead of you, that's a rule.
Yeah, I think it's D E C's point of view, it makes their job easier if you're a year in and they start seeing houses go up. Because what they don't want is someone coming in and say, "Yeah, well, no, this is going to be a subdivision someday. Mine it, sell material, and just take off." So if you do that, and you don't build the houses, then we're stuck with illegal mining operations that occur and violation of New York law. So, you know, as suggested, the two years, what D E C said to us on, on site was, we want to start seeing some...
Well, D E C or DOT, it wants us to have an approved site plan, you know, major subdivision, right, before they're even going to issue you anything, right? That's why I was under the impression.
Correct, correct.
That's, that's why you're here, to do the major, the major subdivision.
Correct.
To get that approval, so to show that, you know, there is a project here, and you're not going to do exactly what, you know...
Right. I, I still think even with the approval, D E C is still going to watch, sort of...
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's no, there's, there's no, there's no doubt, yeah.
Half a million yards out of there, and you walk away.
Yeah.
If you had another way out of there, if you had a, a way onto Spring, Spring Avenue, you could develop the, the houses from Crick Road, and then just pull all your gravel out to, to Spring Avenue. You would...
I don't think so.
Well, he's got half a million yards of gravel there, he's, I mean, he's going to put two houses down in there, he might as well, I don't know, you do any way you want to, but I'd be pretty pissed if I bought a house with 34 trucks going by every day, you know, 34 in, 34 out every day, you know, with just the dust and everything else. But that's just a thought.
If they phase away, we'll have to come up with some kind of temporary cul-de-sac or some kind of temporary T turnaround for fire rap roads.
Well, the road itself is, is just to the cul-de-sac. The other things down here are driveways, right?
Yeah, someday they're going to show up on the town board, maybe wondering why their driveway's not getting plowed by the town. That'll, that happens all the time.
What's the rough length of the longest driveway?
I don't know.
Let me see, this is, this is 16 scale, it's 180 feet. Say somewhere in the ballpark, 350 feet, I think. Yeah, there, we did provide a turnaround here that would meet the requirements of emergency act runs. So that has, that has been added right here.
Do a lot of excavation with that con?
Um, yeah, so some, so some part of it's just going to be shaping up a berm, and the other half is going to be, so probably we can have boxing down the one side, just to shape up the, the berm on the southern side.
In reference to the, in reference to the responses to the SWIP, did you get a chance to review those?
We're reviewing SWIP.
Okay. So there's no need at this time to go through this. Okay. Anybody have any questions, sir?
I have another question.
You have another question?
What's the status of the J E on that?
Um, I will ask the, I'll ask the, that's all.
Are they answering questions?
Oh.
Not quickly.
Whoa, that was a shot over the bow. Andy, do you have any?
Not this time.
Thing that you like, okay. So I think at this time, now going to review the, have you review the, the responses and the new SWIP. I'm not, I'm not sure where this goes as far as the excavation plan does.
Well, I'll provide a response to the applicant, on my review includes...
You already, you already stated that you didn't think it was a realistic, you know, number...
In some wording, did not affect what we put in.
Okay. I think in, in light of that, maybe you ought to rethink this as far as what you possibly could do to mitigate that a little bit.
Are the two year rules on?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
You might have very recent reports.
Okay. All right. Okay, is there anything else we have to discuss?
Well, this, this really is getting us to the SEACER.
Yeah.
Put together the SEACER and becoming of the impacts that they're going to be. So that's why, if you want to get this to where we can make decisions.
Okay.
That's where we're heading.
All right.
Is it in the, the town here? It's SEACER review prior scheduled public hearing? That...
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay. So all of that, yeah.
Yeah.
Proceed.
All right.
So, do you have any comments?
You, would you be able to respond at our next meeting?
For...
Okay. So I would assume you'd be on, be on our agenda for our next meeting?
With that.
Okay. And that's on the 16th of October, two weeks?
I should be able to set next week.
Okay.
All right.
So great, thank you.
And, you know, I'll ask the board to, you know, maybe review the excavation plan and the comments from Creighton Manning. If they have any other additional questions, we'll address those. Other than that, I think we're all set. You said that these plans here that we got are virtually, there's no, these are just the formal plans that you finalized at this point.
Yeah.
There's no major changes from what you would...
No, there's not really any significant, very minor things, such as like, on the road subcontrol plan, adding additional steel pipes.
Yeah.
Certain locations, like, up the school front, but...
Okay.
Things of that nature. So, basically tuning up, tuning up the plan set.
Okay.
Referred to that.
Yeah.
Still haven't got...
No?
Oh, you got it.
You didn't get these? You didn't get these, this new packet? Okay.
We got it all drawn.
Lucky you.
That happened later in my office, you may have never shown up.
Just need to do, we needed a copy center. Actually, they were taking so long to get it, we used a different copy center, drove up once to the town, because it told me they had yours there that day. So I said, okay, I've heard that before.
All right.
There's something missing on the way to Augsburg.
There's what's that?
I sent some to Augsburg two weeks ago that I haven't got.
Oh, really, yeah. Seems to be going around. And the SWIP, you're not going to misplace that plant since it's 25 sheets.
No, no, not this one, you know.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's, that's a lot of trees there. Okay, then we will see you on the 16th.
Thank you much, appreciate it.
All right, and as you probably know, there is a public hearing. Oh, no, that's on, that's on the.
Is that the following?
Yeah, that's, that's on the November 2nd, 6th. Okay, disregard that.
Okay. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you, Matt. 6th, okay, that concludes our regular agenda. I don't believe there's anything new on your new business, is that correct?
No.
Kevin, okay. And just to review our agenda for our next meeting, right now, it appears that all we have is the Paramount Building Group. We have not heard anything from C V E or National Grid at this point. Okay. And the potential agenda is just the Paramount Building Group. I don't think there's anything that I forgot from previous meetings, is there? Was there another, was there something else? Yeah?
I'm not sure what's going on.
There is Lucky's Market, the.
I think, I think Silas might, might be coming in on the next meeting, we'll see.
All right.
Just for an update, possibly.
That coal name?
Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want to put the, them on our agenda tentatively, or what?
Rush just mentioned that me in passing, that he was going to get one of his clients to see if they wanted to do an update for that to be accepted officially.
Okay. This Noel Engineering is the, is that the, the Lucky's Market that they're going to put? Okay. And that's all I have. And then on the following meeting, on November 6th, we have O'Neil with the special use permit. That's, all right. If there's no other business, then I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're all set, thank you.
I believe they did.